You should be able to hear me now.
Yes, we can hear you now. Hi, everybody.
Janelle, did Ann Marie get to you before the meeting?
Yes, I was driving, so I apologize. I missed that.
All right. Which office are you in, Glenn?
Lewis.
Oh, my goodness.
Yeah, yeah.
Closer.
Yeah.
Down the street.
I am. I'm trying to make this my primary office at this point. Yeah, I just, I just, I just, I gotta be down here. It's too good to be down here.
What's on day like today?
In fact, John, I got my Lewis little magazine the other day and saw your family on the cover. That was, that was neat.
Oh, thank you very much.
Nice, nice article, John.
Yeah, really.
Thank you, Bonnie. Very much. It was a lot of fun.
He'll be running for office. Apparently, we have, what do we have now, Bonnie? Three or four candidates running?
Three, as far as I know.
Takes to replace you, three people to replace you?
Any one of them will be just fine, I'm sure.
Oh, you dare. Oh, oh.
Possibly has a political statement.
You are so bad.
Well, I think, I think, I think it's gonna be fun and, and I look forward to watching the election from the sidelines.
Okay, from New Hampshire.
From New Hampshire. Just so.
Oh, my goodness.
I want to know, Drew, that you gave me, you gave me grief about my little red truck, and it made its inaugural trip to the dump today.
Hi, Nancy. Welcome.
Hey, Nancy.
Bonnie, you didn't answer the question. Did the truck come back from the dump?
Can you hear me, Nancy?
Yes, it made it both ways. And I even tested it to see if that, that old, what is it, 13-year-old V6 had any pickup. And it does. It doesn't like it, but it does.
Well, it is a pickup truck, right?
It is a pickup truck. It's mighty spiffy with its new tires.
In our tin can alley collection here, I have a 16-year-old pickup truck now.
Oh.
It doesn't need to be bigger. It's a ton of...
I'm impressed.
But hopefully, I'll be leaving it at the other house, not here very much. So. All right, we're almost at 6 o'clock. I'll wait just a minute. And then we'll get started. Melanie, welcome. Kay is going to be a little bit late joining us, but she will be joining us. Okay, I have 6 o'clock, so unless there's reason to delay further, I'm gonna get started, so we can get on with our busy night tonight.
Nice to know.
This is the Thursday, March 11th, public hearing meeting of the Lewis Planning Commission, previously scheduled. The agenda was posted. We have two primary matters of business tonight. It's new business. It's a discussion and public comment regarding the resiliency ordinance pertaining to sea level rise, copy which was available on our website under both the subcommittee heading and attached to the announcement of the meeting. And the second item is the discussion and public comment regarding the ordinance to amend the source water protection overlay excellent recharge area. Both of those will be the subject of the discussion tonight. Tonight is purpose is primarily a public hearing. We want to hear from the public to solicit their input. They have two ways of doing that. Tonight, it'll be part of the official record if they make, if they make a presentation or make comments tonight. Secondly, they can submit written comments through the website, the city website, again, going to one of the subcommittees and looking for the box to offer comments. We appreciate any and all input. This is in furtherance of the commission's desire to have as much transparency and accountability as possible to get as many people to contribute to our decision-making process. We want to make the best decisions we can for the city, and we want to get as much input, as broad an input as possible, to protect the benefits long-term of the city, to ensure its health and protection going forward. Tonight, unfortunately, as you all know, we're on Zoom, which is not our preferred methodology, but unfortunately, that's what we have available. So there are a few little nuances to that. We will have a timekeeper who will be responsible for managing accessibility when we go to public comments. We're gonna have to ask for everybody's patience and cooperations as we conduct the hearing remotely. We'll be here as long as reasonable tonight, and we want to hear from as many persons as possible. Therefore, initially, when people speak, we're going to ask that you limit your comments to no more than five minutes. We'll go through the rest of those people who want to speak by raising their hand at the bottom of their screen and get in queue. And then Janelle will allow people access one-on-one at a time to offer comments, and she'll be the timekeeper to indicate when time is up. If somebody wants to speak and agree with a prior speaker, we'd appreciate it if you would just say so rather than repeating what's been said by someone else. If you agree with them, we're happy to hear that, and we will duly note it, but it's sufficient for you to say that whoever the speaker is, that you agree with them and points that someone else just made. The follow-up tonight to tonight will be next week at our regularly scheduled monthly meeting on the 17th, where we will have a status call on both of these matters, and we will continue to receive comments and review them as long as we can. But we hope tonight to get the breadth of what people want to say and what's of concern. To start us off, we're going to have two short presentations. We're going to talk about both of the two subjects that are on the agenda to make sure that everybody's speaking to the latest information and most up-to-date information. So for about 10 minutes or so, we're going to ask Tom Panetta to talk about the first item on the agenda relating to resiliency. And then Janelle's gonna introduce the over, the source water protection overlay. Tom?
So, Janelle, Janelle's gonna drive the slide deck, and I'll try to keep this short so that we have time for everyone's comments rather than listening to me. I just wanted to get a couple of points across from, so we're all grounded on what we've considered and how we got to the proposed ordinance. So first is, I really want to thank, we've had tremendous input from many authorities, Denrec, University of Delaware, Delaware Geological Survey, the Sea Grant College, GMB, and Sussex County Conservation District. They have all been extremely helpful, as everyone who's on the workshop that we had several months ago heard. And that is the basis of what we used to develop this. So the first, we're gonna go as you know, a brief overview of the scientific input. Janelle, second slide. So this curve is the genesis of everything. The first time this curve was introduced was at the 2016 mayor and city council meeting. It was the prior revision, prior data set. And at that time, the city council decided that the mid-level curve, which is the green one, at 40 years out, was what would be used for planning purposes. And that critical infrastructure would be a longer timeframe horizon. And it is the critical infrastructure in general is mostly under the control of the government entities, either BPW or the city. So the one thing I'd like to point out is, oh, and I, Bob Hefner was, Hefner was instrumental at putting together this presentation. So he has annotated on here to show the various dates and the level of sea level rise that you'll see in our ordinance. So 40 years out, which is what we chose for critical infrastructure, because in general, it gets rebuilt. You can see that's a half a meter, roughly, you know, a foot and a half of sea level rise. For residential construction, we chose a longer time rise in 2075. And the reason for that is, is that houses in general are built to last 100 years. So once you put a foundation in a house in the ground, it's there for the long term. And so you see at 2075, we're talking about at the, with the upper level curve of one meter. Next slide? Oh, by the way, so this, this curve cascades down. It, it's got input from the International Climate Change Organization through the federal government, and the curve we use is the curve that is put out by the state. Next slide? Janelle, wasn't there a slide before this one? Yes, sorry. So this curve, just quickly, it shows the general trend of sea level and how sea level has increased over the last roughly century. One of the things to point out here is that the, and probably is best seen on the next slide, is the level of sea level rise is increasing as time goes on. So it is not a linear increase that we're dealing with here. This curve is very informative in that this comes from NASA, and it is a forecast of the number of flooding days by time. So you can see that as time goes by, the amount of days that you will have flooding increases. I don't know if you'd say exponentially, but it increases at a very increasing rate, to the point that, you know, I think you can see out in the year 26, 2050, we're having almost 150 days worth of flooding. The next slides are just, so just so that everyone understands, these slides are representative. These come from last year's high tides in this is October timeframe, I believe? Yes, this is October, the October 30th storm. So the first one, you can see this is Cedar in California. The next slide is Cedar in California, also a different angle. The third slide is Pilot Town Road out by where Park comes into it. And the last slide is some of this is New Road, isn't it?
This is, this is actually, I think this is a different slide than what we were, we were thinking. This is actually Cedar. This is Washington looking toward the Children's Beach House.
Oh, okay. I'm sorry. Yeah, we had talked about putting one in from New Road. We don't have that. All right. The, the next slide, this is to show you the city municipal outline in black. And then everything in blue is the areas that are within the floodplains. And the purpose of this is that we built the ordinance around. It, everything within the floodplain is subject to the ordinance. Areas outside the floodplain currently are not subject to the provisions of the proposed ordinance. But as you can see, a great deal of, well, all of the beach and everything coming back along the Canary Creek is the areas that are most concerned from a flooding perspective. Next slide? This slide is, while it's not directly related to, or it's not directly related to sea level or to surface flooding, this shows the depth to water change over time due to the hydrostatic head that increasing sea level rise has. So you can see that, you know, the trend going from, and so the horizontal axis is distance from either the ocean or the bay, which is where you get your sea level rise hydrostatic forces from, and how much the water table increases over, over that period. So I thought this was just a good representation of what we're dealing with relative to basements, hydrostatic forces, and frankly, the ability to infiltrate water back into the ground. This is really just the background. Okay, next slide? So the, this section we're talking about now is, is the, the work that we've done so far. What is covered, what is not covered by the proposal and what is still to be studied. So as we already discussed, the genesis of this was mayor and city council in February 2016. And while at that point, they chose curves and times, they, no ordinances were ever made to enforce them. So that's what the task was here, was to actually codify language so that we could enforce or mitigate the impacts of that. In 2019, city council asked Planning Commission to draft the proposed ordinance. Extensive discussions were had. As I listed at the front with, we reached out to all the technical experts that we could think of. And just from a grounding perspective, our current code requires an 18-inch freeboard, and that is generally accepted by the industry and insurance carriers. The 18 inches can be looked at as an uncertainty factor. So, you know, if the floodplain says that you're at six feet, you have to build 18 inches over it due to uncertainty. So what we've proposed is a count, basically, it's a calculation for how to set the first floor within the floodplains. And that is simply the, the standard NAVD 88, which is the standard reference horizontal line, plus what elevation the floodplain is at, which comes directly off of the floodplain maps or the floodplain rate studies. Overlay that with the amount of sea level rise for the time and the risk that we're willing to take, plus the freeboard. We separated out critical facilities because critical facilities are things such as telecommunications, nursing homes, a physical plant like water treatment and wastewater that need to be able to ride through any of these events. So we have more stringent criteria for them. And then one of the items you'll see in the proposed ordinance is that in general, the zoning requires a maximum of 65% lot coverage to reduce the impact of flooding and allow for percolation. We've reduced that to 50% lot coverage with the ability to earn back 10% lot coverage by implementing certain mitigating practices like rain gardens, infiltration, pervious pavement, and those are all contained in a separate design guideline. They're not in the ordinance, but they're in the design guideline, which was also posted up on the, the website. And a lot of those came out of the study that the Association of Coastal Towns had sponsored. So that came out of a group effort, and we chose the best practices that would be suitable for Lewis, given the small lot size and, you know, construction we have. I don't know that we want to go through, or I guess you go through the, the ordinance just in a high level, or since it's been posted on the web, Drew, do you think we should just go to questions?
Yeah, I think what, we'll let Janelle talk about the source water protection ordinance, draft ordinance, and then I think we'll just go to questions.
Oh, you want to do the both at the same time? Okay.
Yes. Janelle? Janelle, can you hear me? Okay, here we go.
Yeah, I'm just getting it up. So the, gonna just go over the source water protection overlay zone. Again, the ordinance was adopted by the city 2008. The state requires the city, because we have a population over 2,000, to have a code requiring regarding source water protection. The focus of the ordinance overall is the protection of water quality and quantity. There are two components to the source water protection. One is wellhead protection, which is not part of the draft being discussed. And the other is excellent recharge area, which is what we've been discussing for tonight. So here's a map of what you can see. The hashed blue lines are the areas of the excellent recharge area that were determined via a lot of study and with geological studies through the state. So there's some along Gilznack Road and a lot along the, the beach. So the current code, current code is 197, 75E, just for anybody who wants to look it up, look it up. The maximum lot cover is 20%. So as of today, this overrides any current lot coverage that you could have per your zoning, and it says your lot coverage is 20% with an ability to go up to 50% if you do an environmental assessment impact report, which typically then means you're doing infiltration for the, the water to get back through the property. So what we have proposed, this has been discussed through the Wetlands Buffer Subcommittee, just so everybody knows, is to amend that code to allow a maximum lot coverage of 50%, which would allow, and then an additional 10% to go up to. So you get up to 60% lot coverage with implementation of runoff reduction practices. And again, examples are what we call BMPs, best management practices, are green roofs, rain barrels, rain gardens. This is the same portion for the runoff reduction practices that is in the sea level rise section of code. And what it's doing is recognizing, it's like we have water quality and quantity issues, so how do we protect that? And this is taking a look at addressing that, because we've recognized there's an issue with the 20%, and how do we address that? So we're looking at that. And then I'm, we're ready for comments if you're ready.
If you want to speak, please hit the button at the bottom, middle of the screen that says hand raised. Janelle will recognize you. Please identify yourself by name and address, and we look forward to hearing your comments.
And we have Janine Warren, who should be coming up any moment now to talk.
Ready? It's Janine Warren. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, um, we have a cottage at 5 Rhode Island Avenue. And so we're intensely interested in this recharge because we're in that area, we understand. And we have a tiny little cottage, but, and it's been there since 1940s, and it's never changed. So we're really affected by this, even if we wanted to put a spring porch on. And I've read, I don't think you can see me, but I've read the, what's on the agenda item, and it's a little bit confusing whether, where it says 50% with an environmental impact. What I, what I heard you just say is, potentially would give us 50% with an additional 10% if we do the best practices, green roof, rain barrel, et cetera. But when I read this agenda item report, it sounds like to get 50%, it says you must do with a, an environmental impact assessment report. Please clarify that.
So the current code requires, if you're, because the current code is 20%, and to get to 50% current code, you have to do an environmental impact assessment report. The proposed code says you can have 50%, but you can go to 60% with best management practices.
Okay, and I find that eminently reasonable. When I first heard about this from one of the city people when we were ready to submit our plans, I was appalled that all these huge mansions, if you will, had been able to be built since had been on the books. So I would just hope that you can see to it that we can do the 50%. And we won't even get to 50%, but 20% is onerous. So that's all I have to say. Thank you for listening.
Thank you for your comments. Janelle, who's next?
I don't have anybody else's hand raised. Oh, here we go. We got a couple. All right, so here comes Nick Carter.
Can he unmute himself, or do you have to?
He should be able to. Nick, you just need to unmute yourself.
How about now?
You're good.
Okay, so I have a comment about the sea level rise. The NOAA projections are, I think, 1/8 of 1 inch per year, which seems to correspond to the graph that you had up earlier. However, there are some other issues. In the year 2010 and the year 2011, the sea level actually fell by about, it says 5 centimeters, or 0.5 centimeters. So there were two years. And it was basically because of the El Nino effect in 2010. So having a, a sort of an exponential curve in sea level rise, rise, I think, is a little aggressive, I think is the best way to put it. And the other issue with sea level rise is the ozone level and the fact that global warming is mostly caused by the damage to the ozone level by the burning of carbon fuels. And with the new administration now in the White House, it assumes that everything is turning to alternative energy, electric vehicles, solar, wind power, hydropower. In fact, I think the city council passed an ordinance about two-stroke gas engine lawn mowers and leaf blowers with a, with a serious attempt, I think, to reduce the burning of fossil fuels to help save the ozone level and minimize global warming. So again, the exponential sea level rise curve, I think, So again, the exponential sea level rise curve, I think, may flatten out by 2025, 2030, 2035, I think, as projected by President Biden. So I don't know if, if that's the way to identify a sea level rise factor over and above the 18 inches. I don't know if that's, that's a fair assumption. And the second point about sea, or the third point about sea level rise for me is that if we're going to add 18 inches to the floodplain level, then why are we not adding 18 inches to the height restriction? Now, Lewis Beach, the height restriction is 34 feet above the crest of the road. And if you're going to add 18 inches for the first floor on construction, then you should add 18 inches to the height restriction and go from 34 to 35 and a half feet. And I'm, I'm done.
Thank you for your comments. Appreciate it.
Okay, next up we have Dennis Reardon, then after him is Rick Stover. So Rick, get ready. But here is Dennis.
Dennis, welcome.
Thank you. Hi, guys. How are you? Not to take any unnecessary time, but I agree with Nick, particularly as it relates to if you're lower, if you're raising the first floor of the house and incrementally over years, it would be very practical to also raise the height limit in those areas affected by this ordinance. The other thing, the best practices, the three things, what do the best practices do? Could somebody explain that to me? The impact that that has on the recharge area? And the intrusion of saltwater. What, what do those best practices do? Because, and the reason I ask this question is that here on the beach, there, there is, other than impervious surface, everything is sand. And what does the, these best practices, what do they do that's different than the water just going straight through the sand? We don't have flooding over here on the beach. So can anybody help me understand that?
So the purpose of best management practices is to deal with water quality and quantity. So best management practices have a tendency to clean up the water before it gets back into the ground, into the aquifer. You know, taller grasses, other things can start cleaning the water. And it also helps with, I understand the impact of sand, but not everybody has sand or they're underneath, they have something else besides sand that it looks at getting the water back into the, the ground. Again, excellent recharge is about quality and quantity of the water and the overall, then the aquifer. Excellent recharge and the protection of that water and the aquifer that's below that will also help slow down the impact of saltwater intrusion. So the more water we can get back into the ground, it'll slow down saltwater intrusion. And I have, that has been informed to me from, from a hydrogeologist to, so just, nobody has to take my word for it. That is information I, that has been passed on to me because that question has come up. So it will actually slow the impact of of saltwater intrusion.
You talked about the quality and the quantity. So does the water that, the storm water runoff that goes into the sand, does that get into an aquifer on the east side of the canal?
I believe it goes into aquifer. I just don't know where the aquifer starts and stops.
Well, if I think that a presentation to BPW on the 24th, they talked about two small aquifers on the east side of the canal over near the wastewater treatment plant. And the, the biggest part of the presentation was to the, the fact that the fresh water will, is heavier than the saltwater and it will slow down the, and prevent the intrusion of saltwater into the aquifer. And so if the, the freshwater stormwater runoff, it's, it's going to be filtered by the sand. If it doesn't get into the aquifer, then what would be the difference between having sand filter the stormwater versus the best management practices? And why would not sand be included in the best management practices?
Again, that I, I can't speak to the specific for, for sand. But the best management practices are based on scientific data that has been done and studies that have been done as to what works. Again, we're not just looking about quantity of water getting in, it's about the quality of the water as well. So sometimes if you have some type of other filter before it gets into the, the ground, it helps clean it up a little bit. And that's typically what some of those BMPs do.
Yeah, I, I understand that, but I still don't understand, and nobody has yet. And you and I had this conversation yesterday, and thank you. But I still have a question about what it, where does that water go? How does it purify any water that gets into the aquifer? And does it get there? And I don't know that. And I think that's a legitimate question. The other thing that in here, it says that if you use these best management practices, then you have to submit an annual, number two, an annual reporting shall be submitted to the planning and development department to ensure the runoff protection practices are still installed, being maintained and functional. How, how does that work administratively? Is it not, where else in the code does it say that a homeowner, once they meet the requirements of the building code or the zoning code, have to on an annual basis report that it's still working? And, and that's going to be an administrative headache. I don't know how you're going to enforce it. We had this discussion yesterday as well, Janelle, and I just want to put out there that I think that's something that should be revisited and reconsidered.
All right, thank you, Dennis. We appreciate it.
There are my comments.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
We will think about them and try and come up with some answers as we go forward. Who's next, Janelle?
Rick Stover.
Rick, welcome.
Yeah, thanks. So I want to apologize in advance because my question, I think, is very selfish. It's more about me than, than the group. But I also do want to say that I, I grew up, I'm a Jersey Shore guy through and through Avalon Ocean City. I swore I would never buy a house at the Delaware Beach until I spent a week in Lewis and absolutely fell in love with the town. I've never, anyway, it's, it's the best kept secret around. I have loved every minute of, of the house. We just bought it about six months ago, but sorry, just wanted to let you guys know how much we love it down there. We did submit a permit that would bring us up to 50%, and I guess maybe our paperwork was not perfect. So we submitted it back in December, so only part of it got approved. I just was kind of asking the question, is the spirit of it, that if the permit was submitted or the drawings were submitted, that there'd be sort of an exception? Or is it basically, again, just like if, if, if it's not, if it wasn't approved by February 8th? Sorry, you know, you can only do part of it. Does that make sense?
It does, but I think Glenn's going to answer that one.
Yeah, I, I wish I had a good answer, but I don't recall exactly what city council did. I recall there are a few applications pending that I believe were exempted, but I'm not sure how Mr. Stover's application fits into that analysis.
Okay, yeah, ours was, um, we, we, it was a pool and a pool house, and apparently we didn't include the contract for the pool. So the pool house got approved, but not the pool. So, you know, obviously.
Anything that was submitted by February 8th, this is Anne Marie Townsend, the city manager. Anything that was submitted by February 8th at 4:30 is being reviewed and issued as long as it meets the requirements, or I'm sorry, as, as long as we, we have everything in place. So, um, that, I, I could check and, and have, Robyn's on, but Robyn Davis, our building official, can check tomorrow and, and follow up with you.
Okay, that'd be great. I think maybe we didn't include the contract for the pool, and so technically it's like we didn't, it was on the drawing, but we didn't include the contract. So I think they're looking at it like, sorry, you didn't, the paperwork wasn't complete. Anyway, I'm sorry, I know this is a selfish question. It's all about me, but I just thought it was a good forum to ask. That'd be great. Thank you.
All right, well, Rick, they'll check up on that. And on behalf of all of us, welcome to Lewis. We all share your view about the best kept secret, and hopefully we keep it that way. All right, who's next, Janelle?
There are no more hands raised. Oh, we just got one. Her name is coming up as Barbara. So Barbara, I'm going to need your last name when you, when you talk. And then Lolita Lopez will be after her.
Okay, I'm Barbara Curtis, and I live in Ship Carpenter Square. I've been following the work of resiliency off and on. Recently, a little bit more off than on. I've been busy with other things, but one of my concerns is that we're using the median sea level rise curve as the basis for the ordinances. And I think we all are aware that climate change science was significantly suppressed during the Trump administration. And there have been studies coming out recently that suggest that, you know, we passed the point of being able to control it. And we're seeing huge icebergs breaking off up in Greenland and in Antarctica and in Himalayas and all over the world, and it's going a lot faster than people anticipated. And I'm just, I'm not going to be popular with the people who have spoken already, but I think we should be looking at the highest curve for predicting sea level rise, and that may not even be enough, even with what Biden wants to do. If we've hit the point of no return, it's going to keep going and getting worse.
I'm not going to answer the question directly, but one of the things I should have mentioned in the presentation is that the curves in general are updated every three years. And the proposed ordinance says that we will use whatever the current co-curves are at that time. So to build in that automatic increase as time goes on. I do recognize your other question now. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, Barbara, thank you very much for your input. Who's next, Janelle?
Lolita Lopez, and you just need to unmute, please.
Good evening, everyone. Can you hear me okay?
Yes.
Thank you for the opportunity to participate, and thank you for what you're doing. It is important work, and I, I don't question the ordinance, the validity of, of the ordinance. I just wanted to ask what recourse a current homeowner has in trying to make improvements on their home and, and share with you the situation that we found ourselves in. We have built a home here at 12 Texas Avenue three years ago, and we are still finishing the home in terms of the exterior. And we contracted for a small pav- paver patio in December and signed a contract early January. And we were on a long waiting list and put down a down payment and the materials are ordered. And we were waiting for a date for installation, since there's a lot of backup in Sussex County for this kind of work. And so we did submit, we got a date, potential date, and we did submit a permit just last week, I believe it was. And we were just shocked. I didn't know anything about the ordinance. And we were shocked that we were turned down since our home is already, I guess, I guess, over the 50%, and we just want to build a small patio and cook some hamburgers for friends. So I wonder if there's any recourse for homeowners like us just trying to, you know, improve our property? Is there any opportunity for us to, you know, provide more sufficient drainage or some way to have the permit reconsidered? Since, you know, I feel like our home is basically unfinished, and it's just a little frustrating. So I'm kind of like, Rick, you know, this is all about me. Don't mean to be selfish, but I'm just looking for any opportunity for some kind of recourse. So thank you for the opportunity to share my story.
Thank you. You just submitted it last week, so you missed the, the first deadline?
Yeah, I had no idea there was a deadline. I didn't know anything about the ordinance. And, you know, we've submitted permits and building our home, you know, many times. So I just, I hadn't heard of anything, and it was really, it really took us off guard. And now I'm, I'm faced with a penalty for default of contract, 10% of materials being returned, delivery fees both ways. It's just an unfortunate circumstance we find ourselves in.
Anne Marie, should we have Robyn get back to her with the specifics to see if she has any latitude on the 10%?
So Robyn's already spoken to her. So I think, you know, again, this is, I, I think this is one that would, and you might want to unmute Robyn. I think this one would be compliant under the new proposed ordinance, but Robyn, it's more familiar.
Good evening, Robyn. Unmute, please.
Good evening.
Good evening. Welcome.
Yeah. And, and Mrs. Lopez's case, yes, they did build her house, I think, several years ago. The permit, if I recall, again, I don't, I'm, I'm at home, so I don't have any information in front of me. The permit was submitted after the cutoff date. I informed Mr. Jesse that the patio that they wanted to install could not be permitted because their existing dwelling was over the 20% that's required by code. And I basically just briefly went into the 50% thing about the submitting the environmental assessment report. So the, the house in general itself, if I recall correctly, was over the 20% lot coverage. So that's why the permit was denied at that time, we're on hold. And they were made aware of the, the public hearing that was happening and potentially the change in the ordinance. So at this time, you know, it was just like the other ones that, that have been placed on hold because the permits came in after the, the February 8th cutoff date.
Okay, so at the moment, we have, she has to wait until, if there is a change by Mayor and City Council.
Correct.
Or unless they want to try to do the environmental assessment report.
Right. I was going to say unless they did the assessment report, which is currently available to them at this time without waiting for anything by Mayor and City Council.
Correct.
So Ms. Lopez, maybe you should speak to Mr. Davis offline about the environmental impact statement and see if you can perhaps consider doing that in the short term. Alternatively, apparently your situation will have to await any potential change by the Mayor and City Council, otherwise. All right, Janelle, who's next?
Betty Bard is next.
Welcome.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, I'm actually, my husband and I are in a similar situation to the last resident, except that we have 10 pallets of pavers on our property because we were unaware, which is an explanation, but not an excuse for why we started our, our work. And were stopped by the enforcement official after the contractor began his work. But my question to you is, at this point, my understanding is if we go through the environmental assessment, we could potentially move to coverage of 50%. we could potentially move to coverage of 50%, a maximum of 50% without having to wait for the ordinance to be changed by city council. If we don't do that, and we are looking and we wait until the ordinance is changed by city council, what is the timeframe that you would expect that to happen? That's my first question. And my second question is, it going to the 60% coverage level? Does that mean that the last 10% is driven by the best practices? Or anything incremental to the existing coverage is driven by the the best practices?
So I can answer the last question first. It's the 50 to 60% that requires the best management practices. So nothing's required to get up to 50 as proposed. Timeframe, we are hoping that, I think the city is hoping to have a decision May, early June regarding the excellent recharge ordinance. So everybody who's talking about sea level rise, different path, but I know the request was tried to move the excellent recharge ordinance a little bit ex quickly, which is why we're here tonight. But I can't guarantee any of those that dates or timeframes.
Can I provide a little more detail on just the milestones going forward? So a- as the chairman said, this, this ordinance will be on the agenda for the planning commission next Wednesday. If the planning commission favorably recommends sending it to Mayor and City Council for consideration at the April 12 meeting, Mayor and City Council would set a date for a public hearing. And then they would be able to act on it following the public hearing, which would be most likely the May meeting. Because we have an election, the May council meeting will be in the, on the third Monday of May. So that gives us plenty of time to to schedule that hearing between the April and May meetings.
Betty, I had a question for you, though. Before the papers were delivered, did your contractor have a permit?
I'm the general contractor on it. I didn't have a, we've hired a contractor from. No, the answer is no.
Okay. All right, well.
Yeah, I was just unaware that to change our driveway, we needed a building permit. We also have a home in Media, Pennsylvania, and that's not required here. So I didn't anticipate that it would be required in Lewis. My mistake.
All right. Betty, thank you for your issue and stay tuned next Wednesday. Hopefully we can follow through on the expediting of at least one of these. They do take some time, however, because there are many steps along. All right. Janelle, we have another person hand up?
Yes, and we've got two people who want to talk again, but I'm going to skip down to Kay Cole Flickinger's laptop because they have not spoken yet. And then I will get back to Janine and Nick.
Okay.
Hello.
Hi, go ahead.
Hi, Cole Flickinger here with Tanya Flickinger, 903 Cedar Street. And we built our home, I don't know, 16 and 17. And we're on the the beach side where the excellent recharge overlay includes our lot. And I had a couple of questions concerning the 50%. And and we agree it should be a minimum of 50% without doing any best management practices. But I did want to put in context because I'm not sure if the committees put this in context for what it means. If you have a 50 by 100 lot, which I understand, Louis, there's a lot of 70 by 100s, there's 50 by 100s out on the beach and a few different sizes. But if you look at the setbacks, the front yard setbacks are 25, rear yards 15, side yards are eight. So if you want to build a house to the setbacks, the heated part of the house in a 50 by 100 lot, that's 2,040 square feet. Okay, that doesn't include a driveway. And if you wanted a 20 foot wide driveway that would go from the front of the house to the street, that's 20 feet by 25 feet. That's another 500 feet. That's 2,540 square feet of lot coverage. So on a 5,000 square foot lot, to build to the setbacks allowed by the zoning and to have a 20 foot wide driveway, you're at 50.8% lot coverage. Okay, so I just wanted to point that out. And the setbacks are also allowed to build covered porches that are not heated, 10 feet in the rear yard and 10 feet in the front yard. So if you elected to do that, your lot coverage would be 3,020 square feet, which is 60.4% lot coverage. So I just wanted to point that out, that to build a house to the current setbacks, you can't accomplish that on a 50 by 100 because you're over the 50. Okay. And then the question of the driveway comes in. So, you know, I know a lot of people in Lewis are open to having stone driveways or shell driveways. I think it's important to understand if that clamshell driveway or stone driveway is considered lot coverage or not. So that's really two points. And I don't know if that wants to be answered about the driveway, because with a driveway, you're really restricting the lot coverage. The next question I have is with Nick Carter's statement, I agree. If if the freeboard, currently it's nine and a half feet above sea level, is where your finished floor has to be on the beach. So and it's 34 feet to the highest point of your house. So I think if you raise it further, but you don't raise the height, then you're going to have a lot of houses with flat roofs or very slight roof lines, which may not be in keeping with the traditional cottage style architecture. So I think that's something people have to think about. If you raise the floor height, but you don't raise the overall height of the structure allowed, you're going to have a bunch of houses that look modern but flat roofs, because people want at least a two story house. That's something else to think about. And I do have a question about the BMPs, the best management practices, to get to the 60%. To what extent is a professional engineer required to be hired to design that to then be reviewed? And what is the average cost to a homeowner to have that designed done by a professional engineer? Is that something that the committee can answer? And also, as you guys know, the groundwater table is very shallow out on the beach. So if you go out in your yard and you dig a hole, two feet in the ground, you're going to encounter water. So I just don't know how much water we're going to be able to put back in the ground because the ground is already saturated. You know, and if you've ever dug a trench at your house to put a sewer line in or to put a propane tank in, they will tell you you have to wait for the low tide in order to dig that three to four foot deep trench without having water fill in the trench and cave the hole in. So that's something to think about. I just don't know how much water we're going to put back in the ground when it's already saturated. And that's all I have. So there's a few questions there that I can, that's all I have.
Well, thank you very much. Janelle?
So the BMP question, an engineer typically, it would probably be required because the city engineer will, per the code, proposed code, it is proposed, will need to review it. I cannot speak to cost. I don't know. It all depends on who you use and what you need to do. And that's not something I have the ability to speak to. But there is most likely a potential that some type of engineer or or professional would be required to verify that the proposed BMPs will work with your property. Because we do recognize that everybody's property is a little bit different. So maybe not every BMP is going to work on every property. So that's why there's so many different BMPs.
Yeah, one of the things I saw in the, in the book that's part of the current ordinance is having someone go out and do a monitoring, drill a well into the ground and monitor the groundwater elevation for a period of time in order to design the BMPs. Because it's a design parameter of a, of a bio swell or rain garden or underground dry well. One of the design parameters is knowing the groundwater table and what it does over a period of time. And so I'm just looking at a lot of expense that could be incurred by homeowners. If they've got to have a geotechnical engineer go out, drill monitoring wells in their yard, do a study, prove where the groundwater is and 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 a survey of the land, what the existing grade is, and then determine what kind of dry well can or cannot be installed in their yard based on the environment that exists in their yard and the water below it. So I'm just wondering if it's, is it a $5,000 cost? Is it a $15,000 cost? Is there a rough idea?
So one, what's currently in the code is the requirement for the, for the, the soil borings and the testing to be done. But we do have several engineers of the city engineers. We have Charlie and Brent. If one of them wants to raise their hand and let me know if they can answer that question, that would be helpful. If not, I'm just going to pick one of you.
You know, can I just pop in here? My sense is, correct me if I'm wrong, but to get to Mr. Flickinger's question, part of the revision of the excellent recharge area code is to actually take out that what's been characterized as a burdensome hydrogeological study process, correct?
No, that that will remain for, because sometimes people might need to be able to do it, but that is not required to get to between 50 and 60. Currently, it's required to get from 20 to 50, but it wouldn't be required to get to 50. And Charlie is unmuted and hopefully you can help us out. Charlie?
I can, I can help a little bit. I, I mean, I think it certainly depends on the particular case of whatever location we're, we're talking about. But a soil boring isn't that expensive. I want to say one soil boring per lot would be five or six or $700. The infiltration test would probably be double that. So you'd be looking in that range. I know Brent and I have been really kind of pushing for bang for the buck best management practices, which have more to do with the driveways being permeable and the decks being permeable. Because if you build a big house and you have a small rain garden, you know, maybe you're not getting as much effect. Every little bit helps, obviously, but you know, those are the things that we're pushing for. But you still need to know what the underlying soil conditions are, that's for sure, and the groundwater level.
All right, thank you, Charlie. Cole, thank you. We'll certainly take your comments into consideration about the coverage and the cost issues.
And the driveway, if it's a clamshell driveway or a stone driveway, is that considered part of the lot coverage?
Robin, you want to answer for him?
Currently clamshells are not are part of the the lot coverage.
And how about a riverstone driveway?
No, or it's not counted either.
Okay, thank you for that.
Thank you again, Cole. Janelle?
We're going to go back to Janie Warren.
Yeah, I was lucky enough to get to grow up on Lewis Beach in the summers. And I would like, from a layperson's viewpoint, can you explain to me what's different about Kentucky to the inlet? And why that's not part of this recharge area? Because I don't have any scientific background and I just don't get it because that area is really low. That's where California is, where you got the pictures. So can you just give me a bullet point on why that's not part of the area and we are back from, you know, from Kentucky back to Cape Pen Open? Thank you.
Sure. So it's based on the geology of what's underneath the ground. So it's all kind of low in that area, but it's really what the ground is made up of that determines what makes the excellent recharge area or not.
Okay, thank you for the help.
Sure.
Thank you, Janie. Janelle, do we have others?
We've got Nick Carter coming back.
Nick, can you unmute?
So I wanted to, I wanted to go back and comment and ask a question about the 18 inches. If the ordinance is accepted, will the planning commission add 18 inches to the height restriction?
I think that's something they'll consider based on and all the other comments, but nobody can guarantee that.
I understand that both, hold on a second. I understand that Dewey Beach and Fenwick Island have adopted similar first levels, 18 inch elevation above the floodplain. And they also added the 18 inches to the height restriction in Dewey Beach and Fenwick Island. And I don't know about Rehoboth or Bethany, but I did hear that both Dewey and Fenwick have done it. So I think that should definitely be considered.
The planning commission can consider that. The current draft ordinance that we put forth does not. And that was based upon doing a survey of existing houses and the existing heights. But it's certainly something we can discuss next Wednesday with the entire planning commission.
Would that be something that would be added to the proposal or that would come after the proposal's been presented?
No, they, planning commission's desire.
The planning commission can make a number of recommendations regarding the ordinance.
Okay.
And just so everybody knows, along the beach, if you are in the floodplain, do you actually get an extra several feet? Because pretty much everywhere else, your maximum height is 30.5 feet. In the floodplain, it is actually 34 feet.
Right.
Nick, just to clarify what you asked in terms of the planning commission's response, we have proposals from our subcommittees, which we will consider next week.
Right.
Assuming we finish those, we will make a recommendation then to Maran City Council with whatever changes, amendments, adjustments or not as the entire planning commission. We're certainly not going to be pulling ourselves tonight on any of these points. But we will take into consideration all of the comments tonight. And then we forward our recommendation to Maran City Council, who, as Anne Marie said earlier, then have to have a public hearing. And then they will decide the final changes, if any, to the ordinances. So there are many opportunities for input, not just tonight, but we are trying to get as much input as we can so we can fairly consider all of the various issues and bring forth, again, as I said at the beginning, the best possible recommendation to Maran City Council. So we will take in, we will discuss the 18 inch issue, among others. And we will render a recommendation as soon as possible to Maran City Council.
Great, thank you. And then one last question, the 50% coverage, lot coverage, that includes the perimeter of the lot. That's not inside the setbacks, correct?
That's the entirety of the lot.
Correct. Okay. All right. Thank you.
Thank you again, Nick. Janelle and the other parties? You're muted.
Yep, I don't have any other hands up at the moment.
All right, let's give it a couple of minutes. We had like 30 some people on earlier. Is that still?
That is, that is still correct. So a hand just came up. I want to say it looks like Ed something number one. I'm going to ask you to please state your name because I don't know. And all you need to do is unmute yourself.
Can you hear me?
Can you hear me?
Yes.
It's not Ed, it's Rick Quill. I can't get on. Somehow I'm having technical issues.
So we can hear you, Rick. Go ahead.
Can you hear me?
Yeah, we can hear you.
So I, I want to stay as calm as I possibly can. I want to stay as calm as I possibly can, because you're not giving the citizens of Lewis and Lewis Beach the full backdrop of this story. You're baking a cake without a lot of ingredients in it. So basically, I'm going to, if somebody, if the people who are on this line or the citizens of Lewis Beach, first of all, I would assume that nobody on this panel lives in Lewis Beach. It's not to be a slight to you, but I assume you don't. So the people in Lewis Beach, let me be, let me be, uh, hold on a minute. Let me, let me try to tell you what's going on. And in layman's terms, because I'm not a scientist either. The source water ordinance was mandated by the state of Delaware and Denrick about around 2004. It originated from Newcastle County, because they wanted to protect our source, let's make this perfectly clear, source water, potable water. So it was mandated by the state and Denrick for every town and county to put an ordinance on their book to protect the source water, the wellhead overlays. It was supposed to be done by 2006. The town of Lewis never adopted it until 2008. This happened from 2008 to 2021, not one time did they enact this ordinance. And if they did what they were supposed to do, we would have had a lot of science, all the science we might even need it to, to, to make it an intelligent, a, 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 an assessment. Nobody can deny global warming. Nobody can deny rising sea levels. But what this, so in 13 years, they never, ever, ever applied the ordinance once. So when they talk to you about the 20 to 50% parameters, that's a bogus. It was called an oversight. They call an oversight. They want to pretend to you that's an arcane provision that was never known by the building officials. That's a lie. 2018, we applied for rezoning of 203 Savannah Road. Five weeks later, the town manager and the town building, uh, the town manager and the town planner sent out a memo to the building officials and the mayor and council stating that there was an oversight. From 2018 to 2021, never enforced. The good news is, is no harm, no foul. And why is that? Dennis Redd brought up a subject about Scott Andrews. And I take it up there, there's nobody science on this panel tonight. There's not one scientist, you're a scientist, if I'm, if I'm wrong, I'm sorry for that assumption. Not one of you. So in that Scott Andrews, back when that was adopted, was the Delaware Geological Society. They judiciously and equitably mapped every area in, in Delaware, excellent recharge, sandy, sandy areas, it would be an excellent recharge. But the Scott Andrews also wrote an investigation number 65 back in 2003 or 4 or 5, that the town has, by the way. The states Lewis and, and Rehoboth are a different animal, per se. So let me go back to what Scott Andrews spoke to, and Mr. Panetta was there at the Lewis BP, at the Lewis BPW meeting. You don't have a water issue here, guys, as far as potable water, drinking water. You have all the water you, you need. What he suggests is, is your wellheads that are not on Lewis Beach, they were capped, by the way, in 1945. Your wellheads to provide the city of Lewis's water is 2.1 to 2.8 miles away from Lewis Beach, across from King's Highway, across from Cape Pen High School. With that, you have all the water you need. By the way, Janelle, maybe you should understand about aquifers. I don't even know anything, but I can tell you what the aquifer, that we get our potable water from. Source water. It's called the Columbia Aquifer. And it's also declared undefined, unconfined, I'm sorry, which means they're either confined or unconfined. Unconfined means that it's close to the surface. It's subject to more, more importantly, agricultural pesticides, buildings, whatever, homes construction. It means it's the surface of the aquifer that the water is going to is closer to the surface. It is impossible, let me create that, impossible for any water coming off Lewis Beach to go to the aquifer, to Columbia Aquifer. Impossible. So you can sit there and you can talk about geology and hydrology. Geology, which Janelle talked to the geologist, Delaware Geological, and she stated in the one, in the meetings, oh yeah, it's still the same as when he wrote that. Of course it is. The earth is the earth. Your hydrology changes. It's a fact that this source water provision is being hijacked by, by a rising water sea level. Ladies and gentlemen, we brought this issue before because they tagged us in 203 Savannah Road, tampered with the source water ordinance. Subsequently found out because we were going to.
I, I thank you, Mr. McKay. Chairman McKay set a five-minute rule and you are at your five-minute rule.
Will you waive that rule?
Rick, I will waive it for another minute or so if you.
Okay, then here's the rule. Then here it is. It has no merit. This, okay, yes.
Wait a minute. I will let you go for a short period of time, minute or so, but I want to hear what your recommendations are, not.
Here's the recommendations. I'll get to that right now. There is no, the recommendation is this committee, a subcommittee, spent 10 days on this. It's being fast-tracked. It's going to be a enormous legal, uh, uh, possibility with the city will have to face. So here's the deal of it is, if you go down to 50% on residential, none of us are supposed to maybe giving up some of our ground or land or property rights for that. So if you're hit being hit, what they don't tell you is, they wanted, they wanted me, as a property owner, commercial property, GC, to have that same standard. Lot coverage on R3 is 65. You can go down to 50 or possible 60. If you go down to 60, that's 5%. They expect me at GC to go from 95% down to 50, and they'll never give me the 10. So all's I say to everybody up there, you better read the comp plan. You better read your comp plan. It has the force of law. And Roman numbers 1 through 7 and through page 21 repeatedly talks about the, the general commercial area, what the marine commercial, adrenal commercial area has to be improved, have to be incentivized to get traffic off the in-town. And the Savannah Road Carter in particular, there's three properties, Dairy Queen, us, and Two Dips. The total square footage of those three properties is approximately about 1.4 acres. They want to take 50% of that and give you three quarters. It's not viable. It's not fair. And we're sick of this tired. And I'm going, you're going to hear more from me in the future. You can let me in now, Drew, but I'll tell you what, this is what you're, you want audience participation, and you don't want to hear the full story, because if the people in this town knew what the full story is, they'd be appalled.
Rick, I invite you to submit written comments as long as you want to us, and we will look at them. You obviously have several opportunities after tonight to engage the commission and/or the Mayor and City Council. We invite you to do so.
I wish you had a meeting.
We heard your point, and we will, we will take it under consideration. Janelle, do we have other people waiting?
There is no other hands up. There are no other hands up.
All right. Let's wait a minute or two and see if any other hands. We have like 43 people on, 42 now. Let's wait and see if we have anybody else come up. Otherwise, I think we're done.
Can I ask a question? Tom, or anybody else who knows anything about the procedures at BPW? Is Mr. Andrews's presentation recorded so that anybody could review it in its entirety?
I don't believe.
It's available, because Mr. Reardon watched it yesterday.
I would, I would encourage anybody to watch the entire presentation.
And I have a hard copy of the presentation and I'd be glad to share.
Anne Marie, is that possible to upload to the website so people can access it?
We, we can, we can put a link on the website.
Please, thank you very much. All right, commissioners, unless you prefer otherwise, I think we are prepared to adjourn the meeting. We will take up these matters next week. I remind everyone that we should not have commingled discussions about this in the interim. Remain individually addressing these issues. Please feel free to talk to Glenn, Janelle, Anne Marie, but not a group of us should be discussing these matters between now and next week or thereafter. We'll be entertaining the opportunity to, we have a pretty heavy agenda next week, but we will try and get through some of these points and discussions that were raised tonight. But if you haven't looked at it, what was posted for our meeting next week is substantial. And we have some issues that will take some time. Sumner?
So you said at the very beginning, you, you invited written comments. Do you have a deadline for written comments before we deliberate next week?
I didn't put a deadline on it, but close the business Monday. Any other comments or questions? Councilperson Oster, do you have any thoughts before we adjourn? Glenn, is there anything we need to handle before we adjourn?
No, good, good discussion. And I'm glad you kept the record open. And thanks for those comments concerning conversations among yourselves. Just try to keep this all in the public forum, please.
Anne Marie, is there anything else we should cover?
I don't think so. I think you're good.
Janelle?
I think you're good. No more hands.
Then I'll take a motion to adjourn.
So move second in.
Anne Marie and John nearby seconds. All in favor, raise your hand. Say aye.
Aye.
All right. I have 7:18. We are adjourned. Thank you all very much.
Thank you.
Have a good night.
Thank you to the public.